Go ahead and call the January 11th meeting of the Citrus Heights City Council to order. And if I could, have everybody rise, and I'll ask Dr. Jana Karpinski-Costa. Gosh, I want one meeting I can get through it. Vice Mayor Karpinski-Costa to lead us in the flag.
Please join me in pledging to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I know. Yeah. All right. Next item, please.
I'll do the roll call. Councilmember Lopez Taff.
Here.
Councilmember Middleton.
Here.
Councilmember Schaefer is absent. Vice Mayor Karpinski-Costa.
Present.
And Mayor Daniels.
Here. Next item, please.
This meeting of the Citrus Heights City Council is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;U verse cable systems. This meeting is closed captioned and livestreamed at citrusheights.net. Tonight's meeting replays on Monday, January 15th at 9:00 a.m. on Channel 14. This meeting can also be viewed at the city's YouTube channel.
All right. Next item, please.
Next item is approval of agenda.
Okay, we'll do the approval of the agenda with one exception. We are going to remove the item number four, correct?
Correct. We'll continue that item.
Continue the recognition of the outgoing mayor, Tim Schaefer, and to our next meeting.
With that, I move approval.
Second.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Vice Mayor Karpinski-Costa, seconded by Councilmember Middleton. All those in favor?
Aye.
Next item, please.
With that, our next item is presentation number five, a proclamation of the City of Citrus Heights recognizing the Purple Pageant as a community partner of distinction.
All right.
If you'd like to come up and join me.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Courtney Riddle, Management Analyst with the Economic Development and Community Engagement Department, and I want to present to you all today the ladies of the Purple Pageant. Lisa Taylor is the director, and she's here tonight to receive the proclamation.
Okay, come on up. I'm going to read a proclamation for you. No, right there, it's good. You're good. Yeah, good. And then we'll do a few comments and stuff like that, and we'll come down and take a picture, okay? Okay, so we have a proclamation of the City of Citrus Heights recognizing the Purple Pageant as a community partner of distinction. Whereas the City of Citrus Heights thrives on community engagement and the dedication of its residents and volunteers, and whereas the Purple Pageant exemplifies the spirit of unity, creativity, and celebration within our vibrant city, whereas the Purple Pageant has supported the Citrus Heights community since 2018 and has had 68 individuals graduate from their program. Wow, nice. And whereas Purple Pageant volunteers passionately devote time and effort to enhance city events, including the holiday tree lighting ceremony, the Stars and Stripes Celebration, and Sunday Fun Day, and whereas these dedicated volunteers are the backbone of our community, fostering a sense of pride and togetherness, and whereas the Purple Pageant stands as a symbol of the community with its commitment to inclusivity, diversity, and the communal spirit that makes our city exceptional, now therefore be proclaimed that the City Council of the City of Citrus Heights hereby acknowledges the Purple Pageant and extends sincere gratitude to all volunteers, recognizing their invaluable contributions as a community partner of distinction for their dedication to the Citrus Heights community. And it's signed by the mayor. So, very good. Congratulations.
Do I have to say something?
Oh, yeah.
I just want to say first off, thank you very much for the opportunity, but it's not me, it's them. And these ladies work tirelessly in the community. They give, and they give, and they give. My job is to get the events, their job is to do the work. And at this time, not only are they working, but they're telling friends, and so that allows us to grow, and we are going to keep focusing on manners, etiquette, and life skills, and this will be the future of the City of Citrus Heights.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Any comments from anybody? Yes.
I have one quick comment. I do believe you have an event coming up towards the end of this month.
Yes, ma'am.
Could you tell me a little bit more about it?
We are having an event. It will be the Purple and Gold Gala. At the Purple and Gold Gala, we are looking out to support the Lupus Foundation. As we find there's not enough support with lupus, and so my mom, at 49, passed away, and so that's why lupus is so near and dear to me. Each one of my queens are educated in the field of lupus, what it is, what's going on with it, and they are the voices that are out in the community. A part of the portion of that event will also go for the Purple Pageant 2024. For any young girls that cannot afford to run, we will now have funding that will help them run and be a part of the Purple Pageant family.
And can you remind me the date, time, and location?
January 28, 2024, 6 o'clock, at Granite Bay Country Club.
Thank you.
A little swagger when you say it.
Hi, Lisa.
Hello.
I am so proud to have you honored tonight as being a former judge of one of your events. I know these ladies work very, very hard. I love to see those crowns come out, those smiles, and all of your service. Every event we have in the city, you ladies are there, and so we just really appreciate that, and I love, love seeing you here tonight.
Thank you for your kind words.
Lisa, you've done a great job, and I just, in my heart, I keep thinking that this was, you were Mary Purvis's student, right?
Yes, ma'am.
And so we always remember Mary and the girls that she had, and you took on that role when she passed, and I think, I really want to thank you for doing that.
Thank you for your kind.
Tears are coming to my eyes. It's such a great program.
Thank you.
Yeah, and knowing that I'm your favorite council member, it does help.
Of course.
Thank you so much. Thank you. It's not only about what you're doing, but it's about what you're teaching, and something that's so missing, just so missing from society and so needed. That's incredibly wonderful.
Thank you.
So, thank you for what you're doing, and can we have these little ladies introduce themselves real quick?
Of course we can. Ladies.
Hi, I'm Joel.
There's a voice down there somewhere.
Hi, I'm Amaya.
Good evening, I'm Alaya.
You ladies can introduce yourselves soon.
Good evening, I'm Ebony, the Duchess.
Good evening, I'm Brenda Lee, and I'm alumni.
Good evening, I'm Kyral Ali Raybon, and I'm Miss Dignitary. Thank you.
She's beautiful.
Good evening, my name is Toya Barnes, and I am Queen Miss.
Very nice. Okay, let's go down and get a picture with you, okay?
Thank you all.
I didn't know what it was.
All right, next item, please.
The next item is public comment, and if a member wishes to address the council during the meeting, please fill out a speaker identification sheet and give it to myself, the city clerk. When you're called upon to speak, step forward to the podium and state your name for the record. Normally, speakers are limited to five minutes each, with 30 minutes being allowed for all comments. The mayor has the discretion to lengthen or shorten the allotted times. And at this time, Mayor, I do have one written public comment that I'll read after we hear from members of the audience.
Okay, very good. I'd go ahead and like to call up Nancy Capri, Kepner, maybe. Kepner.
Hello, I've had the privilege of knowing and meeting some of you. Thank you for taking your time. Ms. Middleton, I do not know you, but I'd like to. My name is Nancy Kepner. I and my husband, and previously a kid that grew up, have lived here for 39 years. And right now, I'm having, and have had, this is a little bit of longstanding issues. I have some issues regarding Citrus Heights city government communication. I only have time to list topics. I might be back, God willing, to expand on any issues. So, these are the topics I think need to be addressed seriously by you, our government representatives. Please know these are serious problems. I will start with communication, which I think is the answer to everything, if you work hard enough on it, and it's an ongoing issue to communicate. Your website is ugly. It is, to me, nonusable. I've had more classes in computers, including 70 hours at Intel than I'd like to have, and in-service, or outside, anyway. It is especially bad because many senior citizens do not bother with computers, okay? Especially when Microsoft changed me from Microsoft 6 to Word 12, oh my God, in one leap. Specifically, I was timed out from your website reporting accidents in my front yard, and I had one in June of 2022. It totaled a third car in our life in Citrus Heights. It also took out my precious Japanese maple, and I'm still cranky about that. And it's always hit and run. Two times in over 39, well, I think the first one didn't start until we lived here for seven years, or for two years. All hit and run. There is an address. The police did go knock on the door, nobody answered, they never went back. So here's the deal. I had a neighbor in 2008, on Prince Street, when our other vehicle was taken care out, and one of our representatives on the street came and bugged you guys, or to the city, and I got three boulders in the front of my house. And so this is a problem. I got timed out. I started at 12:30. I did not bring up my Windows 12. I did it on my trusty Android, and I kept rushing to the bathroom. When you're old, you have to take medicines that make you go potty. At 4:30, I guess I took too long. My four hours of work had gone away into the netherworld. I had called the police. I'd asked to do it previously with writing. I have more how to teach writing, how to whatever with writing than you would ever want to sit through any of those classes, and no, I wasn't allowed to. The policeman actually, very nicely, came and persuaded me that was the way. You know why? You can't just have a regular old wall map anymore. Put red button pins on. No, you have to have it on the computer to get recognition. So I just want another boulder. I didn't ask for the first ones. It was a miracle when they showed up. But I'm still happy. You make a really sudden loud noise, I'm jumping in the air. That's for two and a half years, okay? So, my husband doesn't appreciate it. He drops things. He doesn't like it when I yelp. Anyway, no, I was not allowed to write it on the report, and I've been stewing, unhappy. We now are down to one vehicle, probably because we need to be down to one vehicle, but oh, well. It's not necessary. If you're going to hire, buy, and outside post, you don't put old people. It used to be 60% of our demographics in Citrus Heights was over 60%. We're down to 17-some percentage according to the, what kind of ever census. That was political commentary. Please let me, I just wanted one more boulder. I do, but, and the next topic is going to be signage. And I finally figured out last week, when I was driving, my husband was driving, I was taking notes on what the signage was on the roads. I had two, two signs. I, my time is up. Signage is crap. White lines are there, and then I finally figured out, coming north on Prince Street, right before my house is four houses in, and you go smack dab if you are drunk, and then you run away. We've had people chase people under the freeway, and then if they get caught, they report their cars as stolen from the bars down on Sunrise. So, it's a problem. And the signage at Prince Street, there's no stop ahead. Guess what there is? Ahead, and I thought, oh, God, these drunks are driving, and they see ahead and they go, that's what I think they do, and that's kind of a little facetious, but oh, well. So, I wanted to bring that up about the signage. I will be back if they drove down. And then I happened to be driving up Sunrise today, and I saw these beautiful, cute, darling signs saying Citrus Heights with like little wiring behind it along Citrus Heights. I said, why can we not get paint signs? I was going to take a plum bob right on the turn, the first right, hard right turn north of Greenback. There is a hole I reported eight years ago, right smack dab where there's one of those little, I don't think it's a sewer, some little metal thing. It's got to be three feet deep. I made my husband and I do pull over to the side. So, we need to have signage, and because it's deaths waiting to happen. One of them is just north of the high school, and there's no letters. There's no, I think there's a TO sign there. It's coming south, all right? Spend some money. I understand we did when I went to Assemblyman Hoover's townhouse. I understand we, now I'd have some money. So, then there was a thing about composting. I'm in their algorithm. I have been looking up composting. I like egg bites every once in a while. There we are again. All right, egg bites.
I need you to wrap it up.
Three, three, there's a flimsy, two egg bites, twin bridges, has a little flimsy thing on top. Compost or not? Then it has his little bit of paper cups around the egg bites themselves. Compost? Well, that's compost. I know that one. And then there's a little harder plastic at the bottom of the thing. And I'm thinking, oh, God. Luckily, we have sheep, a 12 sheep that our neighbors let us feed. No, I volunteered a year ago in January. I called City Hall and volunteered. The person who took the message did not forward it, and she no longer lived, or worked at the city when I called Mary in May. We have no good communication. We have to go on that aforementioned website. I want better communication because now we're going to get fined, and nobody knows. Nobody knows to compost or not compost. That is the question. So I think I have one more thing, but my time is up.
Nancy?
So, thank you.
Nancy, come back. Come back again. We want to hear from you again. I want you to know I did drive by your house after we talked previously, and I do see your concerns, and there are hopefully some things we can do there, okay?
Oh, I'm going to add one more thing. Up in Placerville, where it cares, went up to Apple Hill, they have little lights across the road, indented, embedded in the road. We need that at every school. This is an ex-school teacher. I'm tired of, I'm still haven't got over the six-year-old that was killed at Greenback and Mariposa. We need to have those wherever.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Nancy.
No, it's not it, but that's all.
Come back.
Thank you so much, Felicity.
Okay, good to see you.
Good to see you.
Okay, and Amy had one for written?
Yes, correct. So the written comment that I had received is from Alfred Sanchez, and it was regarding one of the items on the consent calendar regarding the ordinance amendment regarding pedestrians. And so he states, "We see right through this. It is nothing more than another attempt to make homeless people in the City of Citrus Heights uncomfortable and hope they just go away. It will give police another way to push them away. I strongly encourage you to not vote for this." And that concludes his comments.
Okay, thank you very much. Next item, please.
Next item is comments by council members and regional board updates.
Start with Councilmember Middleton.
Thank you, Mayor. Let's see. Happy New Year, everyone. On the 8th of January, I actually had the privilege of doing my first meeting, official meeting as President of the Sacramento Valley Division for Cal Cities, and we are very happy to report back that we have four new regional representatives. We have a full board for our valley, our division, I mean. And we also have some very interesting meetings coming up throughout the region. March 15th, we'll be meeting in Loomis, and we'll be talking about disaster resiliency. And after the Tahoe avalanche, which was very unfortunate, we recognize that that conversation needs to happen as quickly as possible. How do we help our local jurisdictions ensure that they are prepared for any type of natural disasters outside of wildfires? May 17th, we'll be at Shasta Lake, and we'll be talking about affordable housing and funding for smaller cities. Citrus Heights is quite a little bit of the border of a smaller city, but I think we might be able to figure out some creative ways to bring more affordable housing within our jurisdiction. July 19th, we'll be in Elk Grove, and we'll be having a robust discussion about public safety and retention. Chief, I hope to see you there. And I also today went to the grand opening of Sunrise Point, and that was wonderful for me to sit there and watch that grand opening happen because I started that project when I was a planning commissioner, and I got to finally see it come to fruition and see all the happy faces and all the hard work that got put into that program. And while there might be some challenges, we know that anything is possible in our community, and we're going to overcome that, and we might have a model for us to continue to use to provide wraparound services for those families who are most in need. And our family, holidays are always great, but January is like kind of the bum stuff. We have a ton of birthdays, so happy belated birthday to my husband. His birthday was on the 4th. Happy early birthday to my mother. Her birthday is tomorrow. And then happy birthday to me, because mine is next week. I'll be 40. I'm looking forward to it. And that's my comments.
All right, thank you very much. Councilmember Lopez Taff.
All right, Happy New Year again, and I always look at New Years as new opportunities to make impact, and so I'm looking forward to that. Today was the day where I got really busy doing all kinds of things in the community. We had our chamber board member, excuse me, chamber board meeting, and we heard that, we heard from our executive director, and she has resigned to move on to another position. And so we do have a vacancy, and we are putting together a search committee for our next executive director for the Chamber of Commerce. So, you know, you heard it here first, we have an opening, and we will be posting that information very, very soon, but we are very sad to see Diane Abbott go. She has served our chamber so very well through very tough times with COVID, shutdown of businesses, and helping them get reopened. She's been instrumental to our community's success in business world. Also attended this morning and was privileged and honored to give a speech at the grand opening today for Sunrise Point, which of course sits in the district I represent, and it was so wonderful to see our community come out, just really support this particular effort in our community. My Chasin Neighborhood Association members came, and so many people from various areas of our community came to really celebrate the first of its kind in this area, in our city. So I'm just very, very proud of that. I cannot put into words how amazing a result that is, even though I did not have, you know, the history that Councilmember Middleton has. It was just delightful to see that we're serving, you know, 46 new families in our community. That's it.
Okay. Vice Mayor Karpinski-Costa.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wish we had more people because I want to announce something. Until Saturday, you can adopt a dog at the Bradshaw Animal Shelter for free. They are waiving adoption fees in light of the fact that they are overstocked with dogs. And so if you haven't got a dog and you want to get a dog, they're waiving adoption fees. I so wish we had more people so we could spread that word. So I did attend the mosquito meeting in December. We're still working back in 2023. We do our annual wrap-up for the year when the different departments come and talk about all the things they did for the year, and I could just say that that mosquito department, and then we had our Christmas lunch, but that, they are so good, just be grateful. We have probably got, in our county, one of the best districts in the whole United States. So, you know, be proud that we are part of a well-respected mosquito abatement district. Sounds stupid, but you know what? Mosquitoes carry diseases, and so if you don't have any diseases from having mosquitoes around you, then you can thank our district. So anyway, I'm very glad our district is there. And yesterday, I had a sewer board meeting, and we didn't do anything. The agenda was like only 30 minutes, but I am now the vice chair of SAC Sewer. SAC Sewer is now one district. Instead of having SAC Regional and SAC Local Sewers being separate district, we've combined now with one district, and by the end of the year, our HR efforts and all of the other, you know, things that make one business get together will be done by the end of the year. So we are just one district now. I also want to, and there will be, our economic development ladies will give a better update on this later in the program, but while some of you are here, so that some of you don't go away before you hear this, we are sponsoring, the city is sponsoring a community workshop on February 10. It's about neighborhood engagement, and 50 people are invited to attend, the first 50 that sign up. So I want to encourage you to go on the city's website and be one of those 50 people. It's going to be a very exciting time. It's part of our work plan in the city. Our staff and our council has committed to getting, and even our neighborhoods, committed to getting the rest of the people involved in the neighborhoods. And so this is an opportunity to find out how you can do it, what you can do, come with ideas, come with helping other people work their ideas. So it's an opportunity, if you made a New Year's resolution to get involved in your community, this is where you get started. So it's at 8, 9, I'm sorry, 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. in the afternoon. I'm sure there's food there, so they wouldn't have you be there without food. So I would say go on the city's website and sign up because that's the best way, and you will hear more about this event later on in today's agenda. And I think that's all I have.
All right, thank you very much. Just a couple of real quick things. It's been a month since we met, so I hope everybody had a Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy New Year, and all that fun stuff. It's a new year, and so it's a great opportunity for us to do some good things, and I'm feeling confident that's going to happen, and I think Citrus Heights is going to continue to put its mark on the world, and you're going to see some amazing things. I attended the chamber lunch a couple of days ago. The guest speaker was Josh Hoover, our Assemblyman, who is doing an incredible job at the state level. It's a battle because there's a lot of people in that legislature that don't want to see the things that we want to see, and Josh is fighting for ways to work with homelessness, work with the crime that's surrounding all of that, and theft and whatnot, and he's doing what he can, and I admire him for doing it. I attended the RT Board meeting a couple of days ago. Some of you may remember, a couple of months ago, I gave a little recap of the RT Board meeting where we voted down a proposal to put a new light rail station in the downtown area at a tune of $43 million. That got brought back for reconsideration, and I'm extremely disappointed to say that it passed 11 to 1. I was the lone vote against it. We're going to put a light rail station that is one mile away and a three-minute bus ride from another light rail station while you see at the same time. There are hundreds and hundreds of thousands of people out in our area. We don't have a light rail station yet. There's over 50 of them. We don't have one yet. The people down in Elk Grove, they don't have one yet, and we continue to see that unfortunately, the Sacramento Regional Transit District is more of the Sacramento Transit District as opposed to a regional transit district. So it's very sad, very disappointing, and... So it's very sad, very disappointing, and, but it happened, and that's where your tax dollars are going. I attended today the Sacramento Transportation Authority. And the only thing I think I'll report out of that is that we talked about something that is probably inevitable. You know, there is an opportunity to, I guess, resist it in some way, but it's HOV or metered lanes along I-80, kind of this, out in this area over through Davis. So that's probably coming, and you can decide if you want to stay in traffic or pay more money to, to be in a lane. And so it, it is what it is for now. We'll see where it goes. I think it's not the proper way to go, but, but that's kind of where we're at with that. Attended the Sunrise Point kickoff with my fellow council members today. The main thing I want to say out of that is that if you hear anybody say, "It's a homeless shelter," shut them down, okay? Because it's not a homeless shelter. It's, it's, it's an opportunity to put people in housing who might go into a path of homelessness. And the best story we heard was from a dad with three sons who'd been living in their truck for the last two years, and they now had a place to live. And the dad couldn't be more proud. The kids were good kids, they were there. And so if we don't want people on the street, we got to figure out ways to help them not be on the street. So remember that when ideas and projects and stuff like that come forward, that, you know, if you're just going to get up and say, "Not in my backyard," kind of a thing, it just doesn't work. And so there are solutions out there, and, and we'll find more of them, but it was a great story. I want to let people know that starting up, I'm going to be available at City Hall on Mondays from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM. We'll call it Mondays with the Mayor. You can drop in and have a cup of coffee, or, or Nancy can come by and, and talk to me a bit. And, and, you know, hopefully we'll figure out a way maybe to have some cookies or something, too. But we'll have coffee and, and whatnot. And you can come in and say hi, or you can come in and, and bark at me, or whatever you want to do. But we'll be there as long as City Hall is open. City Hall is not open this coming Monday. But after that, again, 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM each Monday, and just please come by.
That's a good idea. I like that idea. That's a good idea.
And then the final thing is, since we're talking birthdays, today's the 11th, right? I think. Day after tomorrow is my little princess's 40th birthday. And so I want to wish my little princess, Stephanie, a happy birthday. Next slide.
Next item is consent calendar items six through 11.
Anybody want to pull anything off the consent calendar? Hearing none, I'll take a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Middleton and seconded by Vice Mayor Karpinski Costa. Any questions or comments on the items? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against? It passes. Next item, please.
Next item is regular calendar item number 12. The subject is city administered grant and incentive program guidelines revisions. The recommendation is to adopt a resolution approving revisions to the Economic Development and Community Engagement Department grant and incentive program guidelines.
Amy, I have the PowerPoint open. It doesn't look like it's coming up. All right, thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Council. Courtney Riddle, Management Analyst with the Economic Development and Community Engagement Department. So I have before you today, for your consideration, some guideline changes to the city's administered grants and incentive programs. A little bit of background, a few months ago, many of you may recall that Councilmember Middleton hosted a grants workshop. And post-workshop, City Manager Feeny and I were talking what we could do to make sure that we had a grant program and incentive program that was easy to understand, that was clear in the way we scored each grant and considered them to provide them to you all for recommendation. And what that resulted in was a review of all of the program's guidelines, including terms of conditions, to make sure that we were looking for inconsistencies in language. We also wanted to make sure that if there was any language there that we could provide clarity on to applicants, so that we could make the process easier, that we would look at that. So we did a comprehensive review of all of the program's guidelines to make sure that we were looking for opportunities to, to make the process a little bit easier. Before you now is an overview of the current programs that the city has, including those that fall within the economic development bucket. So as you can see here, we've got the community support fund. I could not find the date that one was approved by you all, but all of the other programs, including the Sign Improvement, which is an economic development program, the Design Assistant Program also within Economic Development and Activate Auburn. The other programs, you guys are all probably very familiar with, the History and Arts, the Community Projects Grants, and then the Neighborhood Improvement. So we reviewed all of those again to make sure that we had done just a deep dive into everything you all had previously allowed us to put forward, so that we were looking across the board, getting opportunities for those improvements. So looking at our current fiscal year, so this year, all of the programs have had a low return rate. We haven't had outside of the push for the Community Support Grant, which the majority of those funds were awarded. All of the other grant programs at this point have very little subscription. So we also thought, again, is it because perhaps we're not as clear in the guidelines? And again, it was another opportunity for us to consider, was there any confusion in the way the, the applications were written and the eligibility requirements? So we believe that that potentially could be impacting why we were not seeing the increase in subscription for this year. And again, one of the reasons why we're presenting for you tonight, for your consideration, some modifications. So the next slide provides a little bit of an overview of the funding that was approved by your, by you all this last fiscal year. So as you can see, there's a pretty significant fund balance available for community members to apply for a variety of grants, both those that are sort of community project focused and those that are on the economic development side. So in a nutshell, what we did was I developed a standardized application form. One of the things that I found in a review of all of those grant programs is we asked questions differently across the programs, and there wasn't a consistency in the way we asked for information. There was also an opportunity for us to update and simplify some of the terms of conditions that are primarily found in the economic development programming. We also looked at, again, the consistency in our funding level approvals. There were grants that were available at city manager level, at 5,000 and below and above, and there was no real consistency around who was going to be looking at it, what body was going to make those considerations of their application. And so we tried to provide clarity around that. We also heard feedback from all of you last year, and we consolidated the review of all of these programs under the Quality of Life Committee. At one point, both of the review of the programs was spread between Quality of Life and the Finance Committee. And some of you sat on both committees, so you were hearing quite, quite a bit from us. The one program that will stay at the Finance Committee is the Community Support Fund. And the reason for that is it has some, some synergy between the Community Development Block Grant Programming that's awarded by the, pardon me, by the CDD. And we wanted to make sure that you're seeing the full breadth of what monies will be going out into the community for those programs. I also updated the scoring rubric that I used last year for the Community Projects Grants, and I took out language that was specific to that grant program and created a scoring rubric that would be used for all of the grant programming. That way, again, we as staff have a consistent way of reviewing each one to ensure that we are both transparent in our process and providing guidance to you all once we make those staff recommendations for your approval for any programming. Also, all of the funds were, will be immediately dispersed. There were only one or two that required reimbursement, and that became somewhat of a challenge for applicants to be able to do work ahead of time and then request reimbursement. Obviously, the last item was part of that, to make sure that we had some accountability for releasing those funds, that we included a clear reporting requirement that we have, that will be very detailed, so that we can ensure that the applicant did indeed utilize the funds that were awarded for the program that, that they outlined within their applications. So that's an important component of, of those changes. So now what we have for the community is a comp, is a comprehensive grant application package, which will include that standardized application. It will include the updated terms and conditions and all of the specific guideline language. We also will provide them a copy of the rubric ahead of time as part of the community-facing documents, because it will give them a chance to look at what we will be judging their applications on, to ensure that they can review the narrative and any supporting documentation that they provide, to make sure that it's consistent, and they'll understand, again, how their applications will be scored. This is just very small, I realize it now, seeing it, example of what the comprehensive and standard grant application will look like. One of the things that you'll see there is our fabulous IT group are helping me make sure this is a fillable form. So someone can print it out online. There will be a drop box where they can actually choose the grant or incentive program they're applying for, thus making the, again, the form to be standardized across the programming. And they will be able to check boxes that they've read and understood, all of the specific program guidelines, terms of conditions. And that very last sentence, and I realize it, it cut off, is that they understand the reporting requirement, that it is indeed, yes, again, that the money will be dispersed upfront, but there is a component there that says, you know, we, we want you to play fair and do the things that you need to do to make sure that you're using these funds in accordance to your application and what you all approve ultimately. The next thing is, again, a copy of that scoring rubric. So again, applicants have a better understanding of how we're judging their application. And that really concludes that before the council recommendation. Are there any questions?
Any questions? Go ahead.
So I want to say to staff, thank you so much for doing this and streamlining it and bringing us to 2024, where it's a fillable PDF and folks can see and understand, because the hardest part for me, putting on that grants workshop, was going through all of the lists of things I requested from you all and trying to synthesize and understand and break it down to a way that our community members can understand it. It's important, because we want to see a diversity in the number of applicants and the type of applicants. We want to see those really creative projects, such as like Art Beat and things that the Neighborhood Association is doing. It's important for us to really be making sure we're reaching out and making sure that it's completely transparent, it's all in one spot. I remember when I was going through it, I had to look like six different pages on the web. Some, some pages I didn't even know existed on our website. So this is fantastic, and I deeply appreciate this work, because I know it was not easy. But I appreciate all the effort that was put into this to make it what it is right now.
Courtney, you are incredible. You know this, I told you this. This was, you, you started your rubric this year when you, you know, it was my first experience with going over how you, it was so fair, the way you evaluated the applications. So I have a couple of questions, though. So where they can fill it out online, do they submit it online, or do they have to print it off and bring it in?
Well, I'm working with, again, our fabulous IT, because they're helping with, me with the form end of it. I don't know the technical end of it. But we want to make sure that the availability of, of applying isn't just electronic. So someone can email me if that's their choice, they can drop off a copy of their application, all the required documents by the closing date upfront, or they can use the fillable form.
A lot of times, they have to attach documents.
Exactly, exactly.
Especially in nonprofits, that they have to attach certain things. Next question. You said something that you hope they use the money for what it's intended for. Do we, do we have oversight of how they? I know that some of them, they have to bring receipts, and they paid on the basis of the receipts they present. But if we, do we just write a check and we hope they use it, or do we actually follow through and make sure?
The one that I was specifically referring to is, again, the smaller grants like NIP. We had, I think, an award a few, few years ago that was $500. And some, I believe, a History and Arts grant was for $347. So a lot of it is making sure that every single dollar amount, big or small, has a reporting requirement that they understand from the beginning, that they will have to provide proof and provide a report within 45 days of the event or activity occurring or within 12 months. So this council should be able to get, have the award made, and then within 12 months, have that same applicant back in front of you with a report to tell you exactly what their funds were used for. So when you ask for oversight, it's our one foray, it's that next step into holding them accountable, accountable by providing in the documents here, the standardized application, that it is an absolute requirement of the award that they complete a report and turn it into us on those timelines.
Back in the old days, and I hate to always go back to the old days, but we used to give Henry 2,500, up to $2,500 that he could give to community organizations on his own without coming through the process. Do we, do we allow Ash to, like, if somebody comes up and says, it used to be like graduation parties, you know, the kids wanted to have a graduation night before graduation, and they need a few hundred dollars, take a bus to go somewhere, and so Henry could send them on the bus. I mean, do we do anything like where we give Ash a little pocket money to help the community out?
I'm so grateful he decided to answer that.
Thank you for that question. I haven't funded any party buses.
But they're the seniors, you know, seniors go off on the little thing they do, or other little.
I understand the question. And under these grant programs, there is a city manager authority to allow for those type of things to happen. But it would be through more of an application-type program.
But it's up to you, and you don't need to come to the council for it.
Yes, there's, under these programs, there is.
You buy one firework here and one firework.
There's up to $5,000 authority on, on these grant programs for those specified activities under each one of those grants.
Okay. I just want to be able to sure you can do that, because sometimes you're the, the buffer between the community and us.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. And there, there, if there is something that is a discretionary action that I know is consistent with the city council's goals and policies, and it's within my authority, and I certainly would know it's within, something the council would want to see, that is, we do have those operative teams do those things, and typically would be reporting that back to the city council, so.
Okay, good, thanks.
Thanks.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, thank you. I, I think the process was good before, but there's always ways to do things better, and you found them. So thank you so much. It's going to be good. Anybody signed up to speak on this?
I do not have any speaker cards for this item.
Mr. Mayor, can I say something, too?
Go ahead, sure.
I just wanted to say, this is something that we heard a lot about from our nonprofits relative to needing to get some consistency across our programs, and it was a huge lift. Really happy that Courtney Riddle joined the team and has been able to bring this forward. I'm looking forward to efficiencies for our nonprofits and others within the city that want to be part of this grant program, but thank you for your work on this.
And we do put, like, each one of the categories, what eligibility requirements are. So they all know whether they're eligible for a certain pot of money or not, right? That's all in their description of eligibility.
Absolutely. So each one of the individual grant programs has its own document where we list out very specific eligibility requirements. Some of them, some of them, we go to the, as far as listing what is clearly not eligible. We go through an entire list of criteria that must be followed, documentation that must be presented to us during the application period. So the guidelines really provide that specificity on what the programming is for, again, the intention of the money. Again, Auburn-specific program, and some of the other economic development programs are very specific to areas and criteria, and all of that is clearly spelled out in the guidelines that they have to follow.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, if nothing else, what is the desire of the council? Motion, anybody?
I'll move that we adopt a resolution of the city council, the city of Citrus Heights, California, approving revisions to the Economic Development and Community Engagement Department Grant and Incentive Program Guidelines.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Middleton, seconded by Councilmember Lopez Tap. Any questions or comments on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It passes. Next item, please.
The next item is regular calendar, item number 13. The subject is 2024 Stars and Stripes Celebration Update. The recommendation is to discuss the 2024 Stars and Stripes Celebration Update and provide direction to staff.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council members. Regina Cave, General Services Director. This item before you this evening stems from a request that came from council, two council members at the December 14th meeting, to place an item on a future agenda to discuss the Stars and Stripes Celebration. For recap, the Stars and Stripes Celebration was the inaugural event in 2023, coming from council discussions directive and also community support, that we would bring back some type of a celebration to encourage engagement and celebration here in the community around Independence Day. Prior years, we'd had, of course, our parade, our red, white, and blue parade. And so we came to council about this time last year and received direction from city council to go ahead and proceed with the Stars and Stripes Celebration, which included firework displays, food trucks, different. displays, food trucks, different entertainment. That was a very family-friendly and safe event. And so at this time, this item before you again is to open up the floor for discussion by council. Does not have at this point fiscal implications as the budget set for 2024 Stars and Stripes Event has already been set and approved by council with the last budget approval in '23. And so unless our city manager has anything else to add, we will now open the floor for discussion by council.
So I guess I, I think it was me and Tim that did this and him's not here. Is it then the plan to spend $40,000 for fireworks again? So that if I voted no last year, is my no vote carry on for this year too?
The total budget for this item, one of the things that council wanted us to do was have enhancements to community engagement events. This item in the budget for Stars and Stripes Event, we had a total budget of $85,000. A portion of that would be for aerial fireworks. It was approximately $40,000 last year. We're not looking to go beyond that as part of the event.
So you plan to spend $40,000 for fireworks again this year? So my question is, can I register my disapproval of that expenditure again in this new budget cycle or do I have to just, is last year's no work for this year's budget?
I think part of the discussion item here is.
I want to go on record of not supporting aerial fireworks.
So certainly this would be a good opportunity to do that.
Noted.
When, well, on behalf of the dogs who don't like aerial fireworks, my dogs being two of them, who had to go through New Year's, as small as it was, was bad enough. On behalf of the veterans who suffer, when I was a little girl, my father, who was a World War II veteran, my mother would take us to fireworks events out of, the city put them on, usually on the beach, we lived on the coast, and my father stayed home. And as I got older, I realized that what he would do is he would, during fireworks, sit on the edge of the bed with a gun in his hand, that he, it was unloaded, not loaded. And during thunderstorms, he did that and he would pull all the plugs out of the walls. And so it's kind of things that we don't always understand what sets PTSD off in some veterans. When I went to a conference last year in Disneyland, I was almost thrown out of my bed by the fireworks at Disneyland because we were at the Disney Hotel, which I did not choose to stay at, but that's where the conference was. And I will tell you that it does, the noises do have an effect on some people and some dogs don't actually get over that noise for days to weeks. It just upsets their brain a little bit. And so I would support a drone, you know, drone exhibits that I heard about and looked online, they're beautiful, some of the drone shows with no noise. And they can be absolutely gorgeous, they can cost a little bit less and be very entertaining. And I'm not against the event itself. I think the event of bringing the people together and having the food trucks and the coolers, because it was 108 degrees that night. And I was glad to see the community there and it was well-attended and I know the community wants an event, but I don't know that we have to have banging, you know, noisy fireworks that I think caused more harm the next day to dogs and people than it did joy for the people for the 30 minutes that it ran. So I just, in the way, and the cost of it all is just, you know, you're not paving streets in my district, but you can throw $40,000 up in the air. And so that's why I am against it.
Thank you very much. I'm very sympathetic to the vice mayor's words. I think that is terribly tragic. But I think there's also a lot of things that happen in life and whatnot that if we'd started, and we do this already on some level in society, we cancel things. We cancel things because it bothers somebody else. And I think something such as fireworks in the sky are about as American as you can get. And I would like to see us take our 2023 show and have that be our baseline and have it just, you know, grow. And I don't mean necessarily the fireworks, I just mean the show, the spectacular part of the evening.
The music was nice, the people were nice, the staff did such a great job.
I would like to ask if there is a way to have more lighting in the crowd area before the show starts. I went in and out of that area several times and found it to be very difficult at times and with a then-six-year-old, very scary, like, you know, don't, you know, stay right by me. And so some more lighting, I think, would be good, but just some way, I don't, we could repeat the same show and have it be wonderful, I just would like to see it be a baseline and then something more now, another year, so something more. So whatever we can do with it, I'm supporting it. It's the greatest community event I've ever been to since, you know, in my 13 previous years on the council. So there's no doubt the community was starving for this event and we gave it to them and we put it on better, I think, than anybody else. And so I was a little concerned, but it came off wonderful. It was absolutely wonderful. So I'm fully supporting moving forward with what we did and more, and I think that's the general consensus. Any other comments?
Yeah, let's do it. My family enjoyed it. I, my father suffered from PTSD, so I totally get what vice mayor is saying, I understand. But I also understand that we need to continue to build and engage our community and this is a good way to do it.
And my comment is the same. I'm very, very supportive of this particular program. I thought it was a great way to get the entire community out. You know, in talking with our residents, they talk about these events as community gatherings and outside of Sunday Fun Day, this is the other way they gather. And I would want to see this get bigger and I think I mentioned this to you, Regina, the number one thing that I really, really enjoyed was there was no alcohol served and that made it a safe family event. You know, we had huge crowds and everyone felt safe and it, and you could feel the safety because no one was, there was no alcohol involved. So thank you for that.
Nothing else? Okay, and nobody's signed up to speak on this?
I have not received any speaker cards.
Okay, all right, next item, please.
The next item is department reports, number 14, and the subject is Community Engagement Updates by the Economic Development and Community Engagement Department.
A file we thought we dropped in the box today is not here.
Mr. Mayor, would you like me to do my city manager updates?
No, you know what? I think we can give these updates without the actual PowerPoint slide. We're going to improvise a little bit, okay?
Okay, yep, go ahead.
All right, so let me tell you a little bit. Dr. Gina actually took a little bit of our thunder earlier, talking a little bit about the community workshops. I thank you for that, for the words. We're very excited that the community workshop will occur on February the 10th. It will be held right here at City Hall, so anyone who's interested, Dr. Gina's already taught quite a bit about how to find it. You can find the path of it on the city's website, it says "Community Workshop." Click on it and you'll be registered to come and join us. It's going to be a fun-filled day and we're looking forward to hearing all of the voices and getting the ideas from the community. So one of the updates that I promised Dr. Gina today is registration opened up on July, pardon me, July, it tells you where my planning pages are, on January the 5th, and we had 37 registrants as of Monday of this week.
So only 12 more spots?
Exactly. So when you talked about the 50 spots, I just want to say again to the community, it's going to be a great day. We're looking forward to hearing from you, we're going to give you a great swag bag, lots of city-sponsored stuff in it, feed you lunch, and there's only 12 more spots. So get right on that website and our social media accounts.
But if number 51 showed up, you'd let them in.
Well, I'll be honest with you, I don't know if I should say it out loud, but I don't want to turn anyone away. However, we do have a waiting list, we do have capacity for the space for that day and to make sure that we're able to hear everyone's voices, we do have to limit it to 50. But we will take a waitlist and, again, want to make sure that anyone who wants to be a part of our community and do the work, we want to engage with them and make sure we don't lose them. So that's a big part of that one. One of the other pieces that we want to share with you today, and that is the part I really hope we can find online, and that update is going to be, the city is launching a new volunteer portal. I am very excited about this one. So I'm not sure if you guys heard a little bit about what our intentions with this is, but the intention is to finally bring together all of the community-based groups, the nonprofits, and anyone in town who wants to be here and chip in and do the work in the city. And then marry that up with individuals who say, I've got a skill, I want to do something in town, I just don't know where to start. So the idea is to be able to provide a portal, a volunteer hub, where nonprofits and other groups can list their event and their activity online. And then when I have my volunteer profile myself, I can find that event and I can schedule myself directly with them to participate and be their volunteer. Again, it's really exciting because individuals can create their profile, list the kinds of things that they are interested in, and the system will help find those activities within the city for you. So we're very excited about this portal. We reached out to 10 of our partners, both nonprofits and those that are on our connect and our collaborative groups, and we asked them, will you come and pilot this program with us? And that was just two days ago and we had seven of the 10 we hope for respond back. So we're really excited. When the website launches in a couple of days, it'll go live, folks will be able to see the pilot partners that we have that are saying, hey, we have events, we have activities and we want you to be a part of it, come join us. And then I can create my individual profile and find volunteer opportunities that I'm interested in. So that's really where the beauty of what the portal will look like, and it's a real simple name. It says citrusheightsvolunteers.net. So anybody who can remember that, citrusheightsvolunteers.net can find it. Again, that link will go live in just a couple of days and I look forward to seeing all of the event and volunteer opportunities that the community can put together.
Thank you, thank you very much. Just a clarification, is this looking for volunteers to help out with city things or beyond city things into the private sector?
It's beyond that. So what's really exciting is the community-based partners that we got, just like I said yesterday and today, that said we want to post our events, is the Rotary. It is Single Mom Strong. We had Citrus Heights Arts said that they have events. So the example that we told them, Rotary came to mind, was that they've got a big event here at the community center on February the 10th, it's their crab feed. And at Reach this week, they were talking about how much of a lift it is, how busy they are and that they're going to need volunteers. So this is a perfect portal to put that opportunity out there from Rotary, saying we've got this upcoming crab feed, we need volunteers to do everything from setting tables, et cetera. And then you may have a high school student, someone in town that says, I can set a table, I can do that volunteer work. And the hub will put those folks in touch with each other. So that opportunity is there, the need is there from the community organization, and then the opportunity for those individuals that have whatever interests they have in serving their community, that they can get out and do something.
Who's going to manage, is our city manage this spot?
Yes.
So we manage it. So if somebody comes to you to get on the spot.
So actually, I see the presentation just popped in. I'm going to let Marissa take that because we actually had it to show you.
I would just like to add that this is part of our Citrus Heights Cares campaign, right? So we have our three main calls to action as our Citrus Heights Cares campaign, which is report, maintain and chip in. And while there's many things that fall into this toolbox of our Citrus Heights Cares, such as our beautification crew, our shopping cart ordinance that maybe play more into report and maintain, this is really building on that chip-in call to action. So we're looking to engage our community and to have all of you be a part of this volunteer hub, whether you are already volunteering in your community or you're looking for, like we said, some new resolutions coming up to get more involved. This is another great way to do that. We're really hoping to make it easy for people to sign up, to find things within the community, whether they be city-owned or not, and also make it really easy for our organizations within our city to create accounts and source volunteers. So this is a peek at what the pub is looking like right now. We are hoping to continue to improve this, obviously, as we get more people on the site. So once it's live, people will be able to sign up, create an account and then find volunteer needs within their community. If you are the owner of an organization or the leader of an organization, like some of the ones you're seeing here, you'll also be able to create an account for that organization and it's going to be called an agency account. And you'll be able to post your volunteer events here for the volunteers to then sign up. So it's going to be really great just to see all of the needs within our community for volunteers. And then as people have maybe some service hours that they need to do, we know a lot of high school students have hours that they're required to meet before graduation or you're just looking for a way to get involved, they will all be in this one-stop shop, our Citrus Heights Volunteer Hub. We're really looking forward to see the community, both organizationally and residents, come together and like flourish in this volunteer effort that we have and really chip into our community.
So Dr. Gina, what you see up on the website now is, you see it's listed as agency. These are our pilot groups and we will do a complete onboarding with them to show them how to use the site because they can control it. So they can put in a volunteer opportunity and something about an event on their own. What staff will be maintaining is the site itself. We will have full access of the site to monitor things. What's even really nice about this is there's a dashboard that provides all kinds of really valuable information to us as the site administrators, but also to those agencies that have signed up. You'll see here, we've got a couple of photos that we've already put in of events that we held over the community, over the summer in the community, that required some volunteers. And then as you go down a little bit, okay, Marissa's going to show you a little bit. She's going to run it on the background.
I'm just going to log in for you so you can see kind of what it looks like when somebody creates an account.
I see login with Facebook. We're not going to get a bunch of pictures on this, are we?
No, you'll be able to put in your own information. You don't have to go through any other social media channels to get involved.
So what you see here is my account. So this is what people will see once they've created an account. So if you, as a resident, are signing up for the volunteer hub, you'll have an account like this, it will say your own name. And over time, as you sign up for volunteer opportunities, those hours will obviously not reflect zero and you'll be able to go and type in or select your preferred categories in which you care about. Maybe you want to volunteer more in regards to arts and culture or education, et cetera. You'll be able to select those and have needs pop up according to what you're interested in. So we're really, yeah, just tailoring the volunteer experience within our local community.
Very good. Councilmember Middleton.
I already see a great opportunity for this, especially with our Key Club kids at Mesa Verde and soon to be hopefully at San Juan. This is a great way for them to track their hours because the biggest thing is when you have these events and then students are coming back, I need you to sign, I need you to write down the hours. This is a way, like, I see this whole view your full volunteer resume. That's amazing. And at the very top, I also saw there's a calendar. So, you know, we can have our students go and say, hey, you need your hours, you need your service hours, go to the city website, there's stuff right here, right in the community with you, you can pick your dates when you can volunteer, you know what's coming up. I really encourage all of our nonprofits to really take full advantage of this because this is a great opportunity to engage our youth and also make sure that, you know, we have a lot of people engaging and giving back in our community. This is very well done. Good job, guys.
Gina? So I just wanted to say, I love this, love this, love this. I attended a meeting a week or so ago of Helping Hands Orangeville and they're a volunteer organization and they take requests like, I need somebody to change a light bulb, you know? And it may be somebody who's elderly, it may be somebody who's got back problems, it could be anything. But there's so much opportunity for people to do something and just do a little bit of something to make a big difference. And if everybody just gave up one day a year, imagine what it would be, just one day a year and just do something for somebody. And so hopefully we start filling these in with organizations and we start connecting people to do that because not only that helps, but it also helps in developing relationships. And they shared a funny story, so I'll share the funny story. So there was an elderly lady who needed something done, so, you know, they sent somebody over to change a light bulb and then, you know, she needed something again, so say the same guy went over and then she needed something again and they sent somebody else. And it was like, well, you know, can't you send Bob back, you know, kind of a thing? And so. And so, so the point is a, a relationship had developed. And so that's a good thing. And so there's, there's more than just an opportunity to help somebody out in, in one moment. You know, you could be impacting their life in a big way. And so I'm excited that we're doing this. I want to be directly involved, hopefully, with this effort. And, and I see this as something that, again, puts Citrus Heights on the map in a big way. And it'll be copied, I can tell you, it'll be copied eventually. So, okay, anything else? Thank you so much. Oh, oh, wait, the boss is in the background. You're changing light bulbs?
Yes, exactly. Good, good callback right there. You didn't have a chance to see our agenda. We do have a third update for council. Mayor and council members, I'm Megan Huber, Economic Development and Community Engagement Director. The update that I have for you this evening is directly related to at least two strategic objectives that council has set in our current strategic planning term. Earlier last year, we set a goal to send a citywide mailer. And then we also set a goal to continue our Citrus Heights Cares campaign. So with those as goals and with a modest budget resource to be able to dedicate to that, we set out doing some really deep creative work. And I'm very, very excited to give you a preview of this product. So what I am presenting this evening is a citywide mailer that will go into production in the next couple of weeks. And it is our Citrus Heights Cares Guide. We designed this to be a comprehensive resource. Our hope is that it will ultimately make it into every Citrus Heights kitchen drawer as a reference to be continuously used. So hopefully, we can make those really dog-eared corners. This, the product, just to give you a visual, this will be a six-inch by nine-inch booklet-style product, a total of 16 pages.
Kind of like this, yes?
Just about, just about. Mm-hmm. So I'm going to give you a quick preview, a quick flyover of what's included in the guide. So hopefully, you and also our viewing residents at home will be really excited and keep an eye out for it in your mailboxes. So this is the Citrus Heights Cares Guide, a guide on beautifying our city together. It's segmented into many chapters that reflect the actions of our Citrus Heights Cares campaign. We have a really great warm welcome letter from City Manager Feeny. And then you can see the table of contents on the right, indicating that we will provide deeper information around what it looks like for residents to effectively report, effectively maintain, effectively chip in. We've got a great feature on our Neighborhood Engagement Network to hopefully increase interest and participation there. And then the, the remaining chapters, Frequently Asked Questions and Resources, are hopefully what really brings this home as a kitchen drawer resource. So we take an opportunity to go into why it's important for our residents to report issues, blight issues, beautification issues, repair issues in the community so that city staff can effectively respond. We are fortunate to have a variety of channels that residents can use. Everything from our See, Click, Fix app to a good old-fashioned phone call, we take information in all ways. It was also really important to us to have some compelling before and after photos to, to not just talk about it, but to show residents what can happen when we all report needs together. And then the next chapter goes into Maintain. And this is a one-stop of information on how residents can effectively maintain residents. And that's multifamily, single-family, all-dwelling types. We have distilled a, a lot of options, really down into 10 key categories of maintenance with digestible and easy-to-implement recommendations. So the hope is, if we all can be more mindful of how to effectively and simply maintain, certainly a rising tide lifts all ships, and we can continue our neighborhood beautification. After the Maintain mini-chapter, we move into our Chip In chapter. We provide a really comprehensive list of ways, small and large, that residents and businesses can chip in in our community. Mayor Daniels, you said, if everyone gave one day a year, you know, the body of work would grow large exponentially quickly. So we worked to brainstorm ways, small and large. Whatever time or talents or resources folks have to dedicate, hopefully, there's an idea on there that germinates and starts some inspiration. We also featured information on our Connect Citrus Heights community group and calendar of events, as well as our block party trailer, which is a great way to chip in to host a block party and create some neighborhood engagement. The next mini-chapter is on our Neighborhood Engagement Network with a feature box on our volunteer hub. So we worked really hard to get this information out quickly and effectively. Once this tool is launched, we'll be promoting it in a variety of ways. And this will be the first really headlining promotional opportunity for Citrus Heights volunteers. And then the next section is on Frequently Asked Questions. This is really an alternative frame-up of information that we find residents consistently ask for or request. So a good, again, a good one-stop distillation of common information. And then the last part is, like I said, what's hopefully going to really bring this home as a kitchen drawer resource. And that's a comprehensive list of Citrus Heights resident resources. And we've provided this in a couple of different ways, via department and the subject matter that that department oversees. And then we also provided additional resources. Citrus Heights being a contract city, staff consistently educate on where services are provided. It's not always a directly city-provided service, so this mailer is also an opportunity to provide a reference and education on our service provider partners as well. And then what might be my most favorite part of the mailer is the back page because I'm really proud of the fact that 0% of these are stock photos. These photos are all from our Citrus Heights 2023 year. It's all of the work that we've done to beautify, to increase community engagement, and to create community connection on the ground here in our city. So that is a quick flyover of our mailer. I'm really proud to report that we'll be checking the box on sending this mailer soon. And keep an eye out in your mailboxes and please hopefully put it in your kitchen drawer.
Excellent. Comments, anything?
Megan, this is amazing. I kept the very last newsletter that we did that had all the information about the city, which was about 10 years ago. It has a prominent spot still on my refrigerator, and we've moved refrigerators. And so this will go on a magnetic clip and replace the one that I have from 10 years ago. So thank you to you and your team for doing something this great.
That's it? Yeah, thank you.
I just think this is so amazing that you put this together kind of behind our backs because I didn't know you were doing this. And I think there must be a grant out there that would help cover the cost of promoting this because this is good. This is really good. This is really good. People are going to love it.
We hope so.
Yep, good job, good job. Thanks for doing things behind our back.
Oh, my pleasure.
Looks good. Anything else?
This is good.
All right, next item.
Next item is our City Manager Items.
Well, I just want to start off by thanking Director Huber, as well as Marissa Brown and Courtney Riddle for all their great work on community engagement. I echo the comments from council. That's exciting stuff. That comes right out of our focus area work plan, the strategic planning retreats we did, that we talked about community engagement being a key part of what this council wants to see. And so that's the work that we're doing to make it happen. And so some really good work there. Thank you for all your efforts. And I know beyond community engagement, you involved a lot of other departments in your work as you put that together. So thank you to everybody that was part of that. For City Manager Updates, I do have a few. One that the mayor mentioned is we will be closed on Monday, January 15th, an observation of Martin Luther King Jr. Day, holiday closure. And then Tuesday, January 16th, we're going to be coming back. And we'll have a vaccine clinic available to the community. This is occurring at our community center, and it runs from 11 to 3. Hearing a lot about people being ill lately, so we've got an opportunity for them to take advantage of a vaccine. So this is something that we work with Sacramento County on, again, at the community center on Tuesday, the 16th. On a health vein here, and literally a vein, we're having a blood drive Friday, January 19th. And that's right here at City Hall. We're working closely with, with members of the chamber, invite talent to go ahead and host this blood drive. It is from 12 to 4. So when you come in here to City Hall, come to our front desk, and there'll also be some signs to direct you to give blood. I know there's always some nice snacks and things of that nature associated with when you give blood. And I've done it several times, and it is very rewarding. And I get called all the time from the blood banks about needing blood. So I, I hear there's a huge shortage. So if you have it in your heart to come give some blood, we're making that opportunity available.
I think they check you for West Nile antibodies too when you give, so you'd find out if you ever got it.
Yeah, you, you can get a full report, mark up on yourself too. And so, yeah, I've taken advantage of that before. And, and you're right, you, you get beyond the snacks, you get some information about yourself.
Yep.
And we've talked about this tonight, but it's, it's definitely worth highlighting one more time. We are getting quite a few signups. So please, if you have interest in this, and I hope you do, please sign up to join our community workshop. And that's Saturday, February 10th. It's open to 50 members of the community. I know we'll have members of the city council there, members of our staff team will be there as well. We'll look to have attendees pair their skills up to map, do some asset mapping in Citrus Heights, and, and talk about really what they love in their community from a community asset standpoint. And come up with some new ideas there, as well as, for those that attend, you get a terrific Citrus Heights swag bag to, to celebrate all your accomplishments that day. But the workshop is a partnership with the Hopeful Neighborhood Project. This is something that I believe came out of the Neighborhoods USA trip that was held this last year, where we had some members of our neighborhood areas go to NUSA along with some of our staff teams. And some great ideas came out of that, this is one of those. And this initiative is part of our Neighborhood Engagement Network. And again, it's encouraging all residents to get involved where they can. February 10th, at the City Hall Community Room from 9 to 2. And that concludes my updates.
Okay, next item, please.
Next item is items requested by council members or future agenda items.
Okay, anything? Gina, go ahead.
I'd like, I'd like us to invite the firefighters to come and give us a short presentation on, since they're going to be with the boot out on the, on the, on the, at the mall next, right after this meeting, between February 10th, is that when it is? So maybe they can, you know, I've asked them before is to explain what the money, I know they do well with, last year, I think they broke their records on what they raised. I'd just like to hear from them, how they use the money and, and maybe pump up their presence to be and that kind of a thing. Portia and I were the only two, we showed up in the rain last year. They gave us a little plaque that said, thank you, so I don't know.
Oh, I think I still have that.
They could bring the plaque to the meeting. Anyways, if a second person would, you know, go along with that, I'm sure staff could get them here.
Sounds good, yes, absolutely.
We will reach out to them and invite them to the next meeting.
Thanks.
All right, is that it?
Yep.
And then I just want to repeat what the Vice Mayor said earlier about adopting a dog through Saturday, right?
Through Saturday, it's free.
Through Saturday, it's free. Go down and get a dog, go down and get a dog, it's time. And where do they go, is it the SPCA?
It was the, it's the Bradshaw Animal Shelter.
Okay, Bradshaw Animal Shelter.
And I think they have, dogs they have there, they had a picture of them, and they're like running from, so there's all kinds. There's a lot of pit mixes, but, you know, pits make great pets, they really do. I had one, I loved her. And so, but there's other small dogs. And then there's rescue groups that take the good dogs out of there. So if you, if you're looking for a particular breed, and say you want a Golden, and so you go, and so they'll send you off to the Golden Rescue. So they'll, a lot of them, to, to, to ease the space problems, they have foster homes off campus. So I would definitely get down there and line up getting a free dog.
Good, thank you. And then Monday, again, is a holiday. It's a day off for school, and it's an opportunity to teach your kids something. So don't just take the day off, you know, take the opportunity to teach your kids something about Martin Luther King Jr. and what he stood for and his sacrifice. So take that opportunity. And then the last thing, this is items requested by council members, and it should say, and spouses. I received an urgent message that I have to tell my little angel Savannah that I love her. And daddy will be home soon, sorry I've been gone so much lately, and stop crying. So I'll be home soon. And with that, we're adjourned.